Ask that you would please get settled, and if you would, please turn your phones on silent or vibrate. That would be greatly appreciated. Alright, so happy holidays to everyone. Those of you who are here physically at Caroline Middle School and those of you who may be joining online. This evening before we start our business, we have the great pleasure of having some entertainment from our friends at Bowling Green Elementary. That was amazing. Can we give our students another round of applause? I have heard Silent Night by The Temptations and now our students, so it is officially the holiday season. Good evening, school board members, CCPS families, our students, staff, and the Caroline County community. I, Dr. Jawanda Rollins Fells, Chair of the Board, would like to call this December meeting to order. It is my privilege to welcome those attending here in person at Caroline Middle School as well as those who are viewing on our CCPS YouTube channel. Each provides an avenue for you to receive information, have heightened education, awareness, and involvement. The school board is grateful for your attendance as we continue to move our division in a forward direction as hashtag #OneCaroline. Again, welcome to the school board meeting, and now I would like to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Adam Swanton, Student School Board Representative, Mrs. Nancy Carson, representing the Mattapani District, Mr. Sean Kelly, representing the Madison District, Dr. Jawanda Rollins Fells, representing the Reedy Church District, Dr. Sarah Calverick, Superintendent of Schools, Mr. George Spalding, representing the Bowling Green District, Mr. John Copeland, representing the Western Caroline District, Mr. Calvin Taylor, representing the Port Royal District, and I'm Lisa Stevens, Clerk of the Board. Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevens. At this time, I'd ask Mr. Spalding to lead us in our invocation and our students from Bowling Green Elementary to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, in that order, please.
..............................
...............
Thank you, Mr. Spalding, and thank you again to our students from Bowling Green Elementary. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion for the approval of the December 12th, 2022 Agenda.
So moved.
The motion has been made by Mr. Kelly, properly seconded by Mr. Copeland. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask the clerk to please call for the vote.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Copeland?
Aye.
Mr. Spalding?
Aye.
Mrs. Carson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye. The motion carries, and our agenda is now approved. This evening, we will begin with our Achieve 2027 Spotlight, and I'd ask Dr. Monroe to please come forward with our first semester learning walk presentation.
Thank you, and great evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Rollins Fells, Vice Chair Kelly, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. It is truly a plump pleasing pleasure for the school principals and I to spotlight instructional learning walks as we will highlight Goal One of our strategic plan, teaching and learning. At this time, I would like the principals to join me at the podium. As the principals make their way forward, I would like to share that the objective of this presentation are to outline the focus and structure of our instructional learning walks, provide each school's progress by highlighting the instructional glows with a laser focus on instructional alignment and engagement, to also identify opportunities to enhance and/or adjust instructional practices, and to provide measurable next steps for teaching and learning that will be shared by each building principal. Instructional learning walks are a collaborative system for school and division leaders to calibrate instruction across content, grade levels, and departments pre-K to 12. Learning walks are important as they drive professional development, team and individual feedback, and establish a culture of continuous improvement that connects the daily work to our school-wide plan goals. At this time, we will begin with elementary principals, and first up, we'll have Mrs. Hicks, Principal of Madison Elementary School.
Good evening. So I'm gonna start with the focus. This school year, MES is continuing our focus on engagement strategies in the classroom that has students up and moving and collaboration with peers. Our teaching staff is provided, is involved in a book study entitled Real Engagement. We are striving for students to be engaging with each other during lessons, as well as teachers engaging students, and of course, providing opportunities for teachers to be engaging with colleagues through our book study and ongoing professional development. MES is continuously building common math practices with the support of our math coach. Small group instruction is occurring in both reading and math, as well as remediation. We have daily morning meetings, brain breaks, and morning movement activities, as well as after-school clubs. There is weekly team planning, as well as professional learning communities. Best practices for elementary is hands-on as much as possible, and we have implemented literacy stations as well as math stations. Those are all our wonderful glows. So in the areas of grows, at the beginning of the school year, we met with our leadership team and determined our focus for the school year. One of the biggest topics was student engagement. This is one area we set as an area of growth because we feel that this is going to be an ongoing area for growth for years to come. As educators, we are lifelong learners. Our new way for engagement is utilizing the 5E model of instruction, especially as it applies to science. As we go through this learning process, our other focus is also on our new teachers. We really want to provide them with opportunities to grow their skillset and to become veteran CCPS employees. MES next steps. What are we doing? Our school-wide plan is what drives our quest for highly engaged students, which will tend to lead to student achievement. We are encouraging and expecting the use of the 5E model of teaching when it comes to science this year. We already had a professional development on this, and we are having weekly discussions on what components of the 5E plan our teachers are implementing. For our new teachers, our monthly professional development sessions, along with New Teacher Academy and the New Teacher Coach are some of the ways we are helping our new teachers grow. We have also given them an opportunity to do peer observations. For the area of engagement, this has been our major focus. We are getting back to the basics of using whiteboards, simple turn and talk, and wait time while questioning. Each month, we meet as a faculty, and the main focus is engagement. During our professional development, we model engagement strategies, which in return, we expect to see in the classroom. I'm gonna now turn it over to Dr. Monroe, who's gonna be presenting for Lewis and Clark.
Great evening again. I will be presenting for Lewis and Clark as Mrs. Brown was ill today. I will tell you that Lewis and Clark has a laser focus on instructional engagement, alignment, and ensuring collaboration cross-curriculum. The many glows at Lewis and Clark include safe and engaging learning environments, utilizing zones of regulation in all classrooms where students express themselves freely on topics such as growth mindset, grit, and resilience to anchor themselves socially, emotionally, and academically, just to name a few. Also, excellence, use of visuals and modeling for students, as well as small group instruction and learning centers that have allowed them to meet the needs of their most at-promised learners. Also, some of the grows for Lewis and Clark is that at Lewis and Clark, their focus is to increase the rigor in their core instruction. And with that, they will do that through extending lessons to include all five Cs: communication, collaboration, critical and creative thinking, as well as citizenship. There will also be an increase in a focus on consistency when checking for student understanding by having students explain their answers both orally and in written form, as well as teachers increasing student talk and team problem solving to create solutions to real-world problems. Lewis and Clark will make this happen through ongoing observations and closing the feedback loop while providing coaching where needed. This will continue to ensure alignment and engagement by differentiating instruction, as well as providing differentiated professional development so each teacher receives the training that he or she needs. Also, they will be implementing the 5E model, which you've heard a lot about tonight. I will tell the board that the 5E model stands for engage, explore, explain, elaborate, and evaluate. Those five Es are key for all of our elementary schools to move to the next level of success and science achievement. Also, Lewis and Clark will continue their cross-curriculum collaboration to monitor, adjust, and support rigorous teaching and learning. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Hextall.
Alright, good evening. So the focus for-
So the focus for Bowling Green Elementary is on engagement, alignment, and, of course, science instruction. So based on the data and our continued focus on teaching and learning, BGE is focused on students being engaged rather than just compliant. During PLC meetings, staff meetings, and Wednesday PD sessions, strategies have been introduced to help teachers create more opportunities to help students be engaged. A process for checking lesson plans has been established with a focus on alignment to state standards regarding the written, taught, and assessed curriculum. An academic review team has also been established to address the deficiencies in science instruction and to help create a comprehensive school improvement plan. Glows for BGE. During our learning walks, teachers were recognized for adhering to the expectation that clear learning objectives be posted in student-friendly language, along with the SOL number. Teachers have also been tasked with reinforcing those objectives throughout each lesson. Kagan strategies are being observed in classrooms and our students in grades pre-K through two are successfully implementing Hagerty. Lesson plan alignment has also been identified as a strength with continuous focus on unpacking standards in our PLC meetings. And some grows for Bowling Green. Teachers have been trained to utilize the Five E model for science lessons, which is included in our comprehensive school improvement plan and will move from partial to full implementation during the second semester. PD focus will continue to be on engagement and increased student talk, but also an increasing rigor and providing differentiated lessons to meet the needs of all students. And finally, our next steps for Bowling Green. Our next steps are based on the identified grows and the implementation of the CSEP, which is the Comprehensive School Improvement Plan, to ensure accreditation in fifth grade science. We will continue to conduct observations and monitor lesson plans for engagement, increased rigor, and differentiation. And now I will turn it over to the middle school.
Good evening. The instructional focus at Caroline Middle School continues to be student engagement and alignment through clearly written and assessed learning objectives. While data has supported evidence of growth in these two areas, we continue to have it as a focus to support our school-wide plan goals and increase student achievement. During our first three sets of learning walks, positive relationships, evidence of thorough lesson plans, a posted objective have all been noted. An area of celebration this year is the increased consistent use of engaging cooperative learning strategies in all classrooms through the use of Kagan structures. CMS has spent a great deal of time with professional learning in the area of planning for engaging instruction to decrease behaviors and for more meaningful learning to take place. These engaging strategies have been observed in all three rounds of learning walks. During the December learning walk, CMS observed correction to many of the previous grows from the rounds one and two. And our current areas of opportunities are providing differentiated instruction for students performing at different levels, increasing the rigor of assignments and tasks to support the profile of a Virginia graduate Five C learning model and the writing of learning targets that have clear outcomes and academic vocabulary for students to refer to as they learn. We plan to do this through our next steps. In an effort to address these areas of opportunity, CMS will continue to conduct observations and provide feedback on engagement and alignment. We will also collaborate with division specialists to plan for increased rigor and embed differentiation practices into plans. Teachers will also engage in professional learning to support writing clearly stated and measurable learning goals for students. And lastly, a schedule of peer observations will be made for teachers so they can visit classrooms of their colleagues and learn strategies from their very own professional learning communities. And now for Mr. Just from the high school.
Good evening. So please excuse my voice and excuse the only thing I have close to a tacky sweater. So this is what I have. But the focus for Caroline High School this year has been engagement. You know, we talked about that all year. The other focus has been teacher clarity through John Hattie, making sure that we know our learning intentions and success criteria to see what we're doing has an impact on the students in the classroom. So that has been our focus and we'll continue with that this year. And we go into our next slide, the glows. This summer, we introduced teacher clarity and visible learning to our teachers. We did this through our PLC plus model and we then kind of tier that into our department meetings. So we want to continue with that, but that so far has been a success for what we're doing. Our teachers have posted learning intentions and success criteria in their lessons that are visible to the students through Schoology and also visible to them in the classroom. So it's something we like to see and we want to continue to see. Teachers are also still using the engagement strategies that were introduced in August PD that we're still seeing in the lessons now. So those are some of our glows so far this year for us. We look at our grows. We increased the use of student engagement activities in all classrooms. We have to continue to do that. We have done that, but we want to continue to do it, especially as it gets difficult in this point in the year. This can be as simple as including Think Pair Share or Turn to a Partner and Discuss the Following. We have to increase the frequency that we use these. Dr. Conley has provided training to our collaborative teams about a variety of collaborative models besides just the teach and assist model. He tasked them with implementing one of those models into their classrooms by January, then expanding to another one. So we have three different models of collaborative teaching going on. As a school, we need to find ways to increase student talk and higher-level thinking. We also need to implement teacher clarity in our classrooms. We are working to write and post success. As we implement teacher clarity in our classrooms, we have to continue to write and post success criteria that align both to our learning intention and to the curriculum framework. We're still having a little bit of difficulty putting that together, but it's a work in progress. And as our plan moving forward, the first part is to continue with our professional development in both PLC meetings and in our department meetings. You know, as we focus on learning intentions and engagement, we want to make sure that's the focus of our observations, make sure we're providing feedback from every observation on those points of focus for us this year. And to continue with expanding our collaborative models so we have success in that collaborative classroom, whether it's collaborative biology or English. And continue to get support from our specialists in all our core areas to best support our teaching. And I'll turn it this time back over to Dr. Monroe.
In closing, I just want to thank our principals. And I just would like the board to know with our continuous lens and focus on teaching and learning, we will be successful in our individual and collective school outcomes to increase student achievement for all students and achieve full accreditation for all CCPS schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Monroe, and to all of our principals. Are there any comments or questions from the board at this time? Thank you for the informational update. At this time, we will move to our awards, recommend, excuse me, recognitions, accommodations. For all of the parents and students who are present, we do understand that it is a school night. And so what we'll do is go through all of our awards. And then, once they are concluded, we will take a break so that you can be dismissed. Please know that you are more than welcome to stay and I encourage you to do so if you are able. But I will give a break so that we can honor all of our honorees without disruption. At this time, I will ask Dr. Reed to come forward with the recognition of the 2022 School Board Student Representative.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Dr. Rollins Fells, Vice Chair Kelly, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. Adam Swanton has served as a dedicated and committed 2022 School Board Representative. As a member of the School Board, he has worked to ensure student voice. In addition to serving as a member of the School Board, Mr. Swanton also participates in a plethora of other activities, such as the National Honor Society, Principal's Advisory Council, Superintendent's Advisory Committee, soccer, wrestling, and football. His ability to manage his time effectively and balancing all of the aforementioned activities while keeping an A average in all classes is truly impressive. He has truly maintained the high standard of excellence of the role of student School Board Representative. And tonight, we would like to recognize him for his contributions. Mr. Swanton, please come forward. Mr. Swanton, thank you for your contributions and voice to the Caroline County School Board. You have truly been an asset to Caroline High School, our school division, and the larger Caroline community. As a token of our appreciation, we want to present this binder to you.
As we trade positions, I would ask that we would please give Mr. Swanton another round of applause for his service. You have represented us well and the voice of the students well. Thank you. At this time, we'd ask Dr. Calverick present her Superintendent's Art Honor Award.
Good evening, Chair Dr. Rollins Fells, Vice Chair Mr. Kelly, and members of the board. Exposure to art is critical to the development of every child. Art not only teaches students how to express themselves in creative and individual ways, but students who participate in regular art-related activities perform better academically, develop greater confidence, and sharpen their fine motor skills. Beyond these benefits, art education promotes problem-solving, critical thinking, perseverance, growth mindset, collaboration focus, and accountability. All power skills CCPS graduates need to be Three E ready, enrolled, enlisted, and/or employed. In cooperation with Caroline County Public School art teachers, we are recognizing one student each month with a certificate of honor for their individual artwork. The student's art will also be on display at the School Board office for the remainder of the month. At this time, I would like to invite Mrs. Kelly Wainrow, art teacher of Bowling Green Elementary School, to the podium to introduce the December 2022 recipient of the Superintendent's Student Art Honor, Abigail Shannon. Ms. Wainrow, please come forward to the podium.
Good evening. The artwork you see in front of you is a project that involved cutting, tearing, and weaving. Abigail cut each strip of paper that you see. She wove them into the owl's body to create the checkered pattern. You can see she tore paper to make the feathers for the wing and she showed very careful attention to detail with all of her background details, her stars, and her glitter that she put in there. She did a fabulous job with this project. And I'm so proud of you. It is really hard to come down in front of such a large group of people. Do you have some special folks with you tonight? Is your mom here with you? She is, let's wave to her and say thank you. Thank you for bringing you out. Do you have anyone else today? Your grandma's here too. Hi grandma. One more picture for mom. Awesome. I promise you, we will take very good care of this. It will hang at Central Office. We will look at it and think of you fondly as we stare at your beautiful owl and then we'll get it right back to Bowling Green when you come back from winter break. Does that sound like a deal? Awesome. Thank you.
Good job, honey D.O.
Congratulations again, and thank you, mom and grandma, for coming out this evening to support. At this time, we will have Dr. Reed to come back and we will recognize our Caroline High School Fall Athletic Teams.
Good evening. Madam Chair, Dr. Rollins Fells, Vice Chair Kelly, members of the school board, and Dr. Calverick. Athletics are an integral part of the high school experience. Our athletic teams not only teach teamwork, but they also teach perseverance and determination. These components are all part of the whole student and they are a critical piece in student success beyond high school and graduation. Tonight, we would like to recognize our students and coaches who had exemplary performance during the fall season. We would also like to recognize some of our Caroline High School students who participated in academic and CTE programs as well. We have Caroline High School students who have exemplified excellence in athletics and extracurricular activities. We will recognize our high school students in cheer, field hockey, football, cross-country, the band, and CTE students that participated in the CTE Governor's School and the Virginia State University Steam Lit Program. Let's begin with our Cavalier cheerleading program. The following students were recognized for the Battlefield All District Team. They are, and please come forth, Avery Saddlewhite, Olivia Powers, and Abby Bonham.
Ms. Gano, please come forward.
Next, we will recognize our field and track students. Our field hockey and our track students. Lily Smith was recognized for the First Team All Region 3B and Second Team All State. We would also like to recognize Coach Dina Kapler as the Region 3B Coach of the Year. Please come forth.
Come back for one second. We gotta get a picture.
In cross-country, Dominic Kittle was recognized as a medalist and an All Region 3B. Moreover, he was a state qualifier. Dominic, please come forth. This year, our varsity Cavalier football team had an outstanding season. Not only did they move to the playoffs, but they had several players that were recognized for outstanding performance. Tonight, we would like to recognize two students and our Caroline High School coach. Shawn Mersick was recognized as the First Team Battlefield All District and First Team All Region 3B. Vladimir Joason was recognized as First Team Battlefield All District and First Team All Region 3B. And finally, Coach Gerald Johnson was identified as the Battlefield District Coach of the Year. As a leader, Coach Johnson has been an integral part of the development of players and the Caroline High School varsity football team this year. Please come forth. Next, we would like to recognize our Caroline High School band students. The following students were recognized as the Virginia Tech Honor Band Students. Trinity Harless for trumpet. Marcus Head- Trinity Harless for trumpet, Marcus Hale for clarinet, Nia Leagalo for clarinet, Cariana Carroll for bass clarinet, and Liliana Albertraria alto saxophone. Please come forth. Our district corps students included Connor Casey, Evelina Bachelor, Michaela Johnson, and Raya Hall. Please come forth. Next, we would like to recognize Elena Dillard for All County Orchestra. And finally, we'd like to recognize Marcus Hale for being nominated for All District Next, we would like to recognize our CTE students who participated in the Hanover Regional Governor's School. The following career and technical education students participated in the Hanover Governor's School for CTE Advancement. Leana Hayes, Taylor Allen, and John Button. We would also like to recognize Cory Black for participating in the Virginia State Steam Lit Program. During this time, Ms. Black engaged in a program that focused on workplace readiness, careers in STEAM, and life and college readiness. Will Ms. Black please come forward? Please give a round of applause. We want to congratulate our Caroline High School athletes, musicians, and CT students for their outstanding work, performance, and determination this year. Please give them again a round of applause.
And thank you to the parents, the grandparents, the aunts and uncles that transport these amazing children. It is an endless commitment, and we can't do it without you. So kudos to the parents or supporters that are here tonight.
Congratulations again, and congratulations to our coaches in particular for Coach of the Year. All of you have represented us well, and we are extremely proud of you. At this time, if you need to be dismissed, you may do so. You again are more than welcome to stay as we conduct our business. The chair will entertain a motion for its approval.
So moved.
The motion has been made by Mr. Kelly, second by Mrs. Carson. Is there any discussion on our consent agenda? Hearing none, I'd ask the clerk to please call for the vote.
Mr. Spalding.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Carson.
Aye.
Mr. Copeland.
Aye.
Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells.
Aye, the motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. We will now move to our informational items, information from the district, starting with Ms. Kim Young and Dr. Monroe. If you would please come forward with our core values of the month.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Rollins Fells, Vice Chair Kelly, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. Students and staff at each school were honored last month for demonstrating the core value of unity for November. Collaboration is the core value for December, where we will focus on fostering positive relationships, two-way communication, and nurturing relationships with community, business, faith, and civic partners to promote and exchange mutually beneficial resources and services to ensure all students are 3E-ready: enrolled, enlisted, and employed. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We will now have Beth Housler please come forward with our Virginia Literacy Partnership update.
Great evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Rollins Fells, Vice Chair Mr. Kelly, school board members, and Dr. Calverick. Tonight, Beth Housler and Kim Haislip and I will share information about the Virginia Literacy Partnership Fall Report on Spring 2022 PALS results. Within our strategic plan, Achieve 2027, Goal 1 focuses on teaching and learning. In this presentation, the instructional team and I will highlight Strategy 1.1.2, Reading Literacy. We will provide an overview of the Virginia PALS State Report, which offers comparisons of the state averages to Caroline data for Spring 2022. The Phonological Awareness Literacy Screener, otherwise known as PALS Assessment, has been used to evaluate students' risk for reading difficulties in divisions across the Commonwealth for over 20 years. We will provide data from the Fall Assessments and define next steps. We will briefly cover the new pre-K literacy screener. The Virginia Literacy Partnership is the new name for Virginia PALS. With support for the newly legislated Virginia Literacy Act, this partnership is actively revising their literacy screeners and expanding their arsenal of science-based literacy resources. As a screener, one of the primary objectives of the PALS is to help schools intervene early with students who need support. New this year, preschool teachers are assessing using the pre-K Language and Literacy Screener. This assessment tool is used with our three- and four-year-old students. It is required, a required assessment, for all preschool students under the Virginia Preschool Initiative funding. The components of the preschool screener are as follows: phonological awareness, alphabet knowledge, language, passage comprehension, name writing, and print concepts. Historically, we have always administered PALS in kindergarten through third grades, and we will continue to do so under the umbrella of the Virginia Literacy Partnership. Up next, Mrs. Housler will review the findings recently shared in the Virginia Literacy Report for Caroline County Public Schools.
Across the Commonwealth, the rate of students scoring below the PALS benchmark decreased from Spring 2021 to Spring 2022. However, the 2022 below-benchmark rate remained higher than that of Spring 2019, which is pre-pandemic. Compared to kindergarten and first-grade students, second graders showed the least improvement in below-benchmark rates from Spring 2021 to Spring 2022. The results in Caroline mirrored the results across Virginia. In Spring 2022, 24.3% of kindergarten students scored below benchmark, a 21.6 percentage point decrease from 2021. 43.1% of first-grade students scored below benchmark, an 11.3% point decrease from 2021. And 40% of second-grade students scored below benchmark, a 5.1% decrease from 2021. So that's Spring 2022 takeaway one. Okay, Spring 2022 takeaway two. Students who scored below benchmark in the fall tended to also score below benchmark in the spring. Though the percentage of students with fall and spring below-benchmark scores in the 2021-22 school year approximated a return to pre-pandemic levels. This chart shows the proportion of students who scored above and below benchmark in the spring after having scored below benchmark in the fall by school year and grade level. As an example of how to interpret this graph, look at the bar to the very right. Of second-grade students who scored below benchmark in the fall of 2021, 76.3% went on to also score below benchmark in the spring of 2022. And 23.7% went on to score above the benchmark. When comparing the number with 2021, a greater percentage of students identified in the fall scored above the benchmark in the spring. So this is Spring 2022 takeaway number three. In Spring 2022, a large majority of K-2 students were at high or medium risk for reading difficulties similar to rates observed in 2021. Since the onset of the pandemic, the distributions of PALS scores have shifted, with proportions of students at high risk for reading difficulties, i.e. below benchmark, increasing, and the proportion of students at low risk for reading difficulties decreasing. The graphic shows a percentage of K-2 students categorized at high risk, so that's below benchmark, that's the orange; medium risk, just above the benchmark, that's tan; and low risk, green, at each of the last three Spring Assessment period points. As you can see, the students who are at high risk far exceeded the numbers pre-pandemic. The good news is that the low-risk group increased from 2021 to 2022, while the high-risk group decreased during the same period. And if you're looking at that, the 2019 data, that's actually 18.8% for orange. My numbers jumped out of the graphic there. And then 2021, that's 17.2%, which is the low group. So Spring 2022 takeaway number four. Across the Commonwealth, student demographic groups and grade levels showed variable below-benchmark rate improvement from Spring 2021 to Spring 2022. Below-benchmark rates improved most for kindergarten students and least for second-grade students. On this graphic, the yellow bars are spring below-benchmark rates for 2021, and the green bars are spring below-benchmark rates for 2022. In Caroline, kindergarten and first-grade students showed an improvement among all student demographic groups, whereas in second grade, Black and Hispanic students and students with disabilities exhibited a decline between 2021 and 2022. While looking at these second-grade groups, notice that if you look at the same students while they were in first grade in 2021. So remember, the green bar is the second grade, and if you look back and you look at the yellow bar from the previous year, the number of students below the benchmark for this cohort in 2022, it actually declined. Now that we have looked how students performed at the end of the year, Mrs. Haislip will provide greater insights on where we are currently with our data and student progress.
Thank you, Ms. Housler. So where are we now? When presenting our percentage of students who did not meet the fall benchmark, it's important to provide a frame of reference for comparison. The first data point shows the percentages of students across the Commonwealth who were identified this fall. As a division, our students in kindergarten were in line with the state percentage. Students in first and second grade performed slightly higher. Students in second grade experienced the shutdown of schools as preschool students, many months of virtual learning while in kindergarten, and a recovery year in first grade. As we continue to progress monitor, provide remediation, tutoring, and extensions, this cohort of students is moving in a positive direction. However, there are recognized struggles in closing the gap in the first quarter of the school year. When looking at student achievement in first and second grade, it's important to compare the fall results with the results for the same student cohort this past spring. The fall results in each building mirror the number of students identified in the spring. Statewide, 22% of kindergarten students and 31% of first graders did not meet the benchmark. Again, that's for Spring 2022. In Caroline, 24% of kindergartners and 43% of first graders did not meet the benchmark. At Bowling Green Elementary, 23% of kindergartners and 67% of first graders did not meet the benchmark. At Lewis &amp; Clark, 25% of kindergartners and 30% of first graders did not meet the benchmark. At Madison Elementary, 24% of kindergartners and 21% of first graders did not meet the benchmark. Again, that was for Spring of 2022. What about preschool? Pre-K four. Pre-K classes across the Commonwealth that are funded by the Virginia Preschool Initiative are required to be assessed in the fall and spring. The pre-K Language and Literacy Screener Skill Development Bands provide a gauge of skill progress across the year with the goal of reducing the risk for reading difficulties upon entering kindergarten. Currently, only the Alphabet Knowledge subtests, that's letter names and letter sounds, and the Phonological Awareness subtests, syllable segmenting, beginning sounds and matching, and beginning sounds expressive, have skill development bands. There are three skill development bands for each of the four subtests: Beginning, Growing, and Strong. For each of the four subtests, children who score in the Beginning Band for a subtest demonstrate limited early literacy skills in that area for that age level. Children who score in the Growing Band for a subtest demonstrate developing early literacy skills in that area for that age level. Children who score in the Strong Band for a subtest demonstrate well-developed early literacy skills in that area for that age level. The goal is to have children in the Strong section of the skill development bands at the end of the year. Please note the large percentage of students who are considered strong in the Phonological Awareness subtest, syllable segmenting. Pre-K three. The pre-K three class is at Madison Elementary. The pre-K screener assesses all of the same elements except for beginning sounds. Students in pre-K three are assessed on beginning sounds matching rather than beginning sounds expressive. The development bands for pre-K three are different for the letter names and sounds portion of the assessment. Please note the large percentage of students are strong in the Alphabetic Knowledge subtest, letter names. While the administration of this assessment at the beginning of the school year can be challenging, the results provide teachers with important instructional guidance and resources that can be used to accelerate literacy skills, helping to prepare students for kindergarten. And that takes us to our next steps. It's important to note that the fall administration took place for pre-K and K during late September and the first week of October, and for first and second from September 7th through September 21st. So while this presentation has included the most current data available, teachers and students will soon be preparing for the mid-year PALS in mid to late January. So we'll have a whole new dataset to review at that time. The fall data has been utilized at the building level to structure classroom level, push-in, tutoring, and/or pull-out interventions targeting students' needs. As mentioned during the September literacy overview, the division is working diligently to ensure that evidence-based literacy instruction is provided at all levels: whole group in the classroom, strategic small group in the classroom, and need-based intervention, as this is the most effective approach to preventing later reading difficulties. Mid-year data should not only be an indicator of increased achievement and growth in those students identified in the fall, but will also help teachers to determine whether or not any students who scored at or just above benchmark in the fall have experienced any decline. If so, appropriate interventions can be put in place at mid-year to ensure movement in the right direction for those students. The Virginia Literacy Partnership refers to this as considering risk on a continuum, considering, I'm sorry, considering risk for reading difficulties on a continuum and ensuring that we avoid the classroom, strategic small group in the classroom, and need-based intervention, as this is the most effective approach to preventing later reading difficulties. Mid-year data should not only be an indicator of increased achievement and growth in those students identified in the fall, but will also help teachers to determine whether or not any students who scored at or just above benchmark in the fall have experienced any decline. If so, appropriate interventions can be put in place at mid-year to ensure movement in the right direction for those students. The Virginia Literacy Partnership refers to this as considering risk on a continuum, I'm sorry, considering risk for reading difficulties on a continuum and ensuring that we avoid overlooking any students simply because they may have met or just exceeded the benchmark in the fall. Finally, the Virginia Literacy Partnership has created and updated a variety of resources for teachers and families. Those resources are being added to the VLP site on an ongoing basis. The building-level reading specialists are supporting teachers with the use of the comprehensive instructional and professional learning resources. The teacher tools are intended to help our teachers answer the question, "Now what?", and respond appropriately to the screening data. The Family Resource Center includes information about screening in Virginia, updates, links to resources to help at home, and informational flyers and videos on various literacy topics. We believe the Virginia, excuse me, the Virginia Literacy Partnership assessments will continue to assist and inform teachers as they monitor student progress and adjust their instruction to meet the needs of our early learners. Thank you so much. Are there any questions at this time?
Dr. Calverick?
I would be remiss if I did not take a moment to indicate that we have a budget request for FY24 for an additional English Language Arts Specialist to be a counterpart to Ms. Haislip. She covers K-12 ELA and with the Virginia Literacy Act going live in 2024 and data such as what we've seen behind us, I really hope that the community and the educators and paraprofessionals will rally around that budget priority and help make that a realization for CCPS as there's good work to be done.
Absolutely. Are there any other questions or comments from the board?
I just had a question. These are preschool students.
Pre-kindergarten students, how are they determined as far as who those students are going to be?
The students that we are required, sorry, my voice is awful. The students that were required to assess for pre-K are students that are funded with the Virginia Preschool Initiative. So, for example, like the class at Madison, that is a three-year-old class, we are required to assess all of those students and then any other students at Bowling Green, Lewis &amp; Clark, and Madison that are pre-K four, funded by the preschool initiative.
Okay. Okay, so if I have a child that's three years old as a parent, it's my duty to apply? Is it?
It is, it is. There's a process for that that happens in the spring, and it is a very publicized process, and I can attest to the fact that parents, the very first day that it goes live, they are in there submitting applications and link for preschool.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, Andrea Ross is our Director of Federal Programs. She oversees the VPI Virginia Preschool Initiative Head Start, which we are the new grant recipients of as well as the Title I programming. So if you have any additional questions about enrollment, she could provide you with an in-depth, robust response.
Thank you very much.
I have one comment, and it is, thank you for compiling the data. I am looking forward to seeing the mid-year data because we are establishing our baseline. And what we have committed to do is to be transparent with where our students are in terms of, I don't want to say learning loss, but there is a reality here. The takeaway that I'd like you guys to take note of is when principals shared the school improvement plans, there was a focus on the five E model with engagement, alignment, and with science. And so I would like to hear more about how reading specific K-two will be embedded into that school-wide plan. I know it's being addressed, but I want to make sure that we also have it in the big picture and not isolate it.
We will now ask Dr. Margaret Bryant to please come forward with our computer science implementation update, and congratulations.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Madam Chairperson, Dr. Rollins Felds, Vice Chair Kelly, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. Tonight, I would like to discuss three main topics. What is computer science? How is computer science implemented, how is CCPS implementing computer science, and how to grow our computer science implementation across the division? First, we must ask, what is computer science? Computer science is the foundation of compiling all computer processes, including their principles, hardware, software designs, applications, and their impact on society. So it's quite a bit. Computer science principles lead to a variety of specialty fields and careers. In July of 2022, the U.S. Bureau of Labor and Statistics reported that the average salary of a computer science graduate is ninety-seven thousand plus. These occupations run a gamut of titles, as you can see, compensation and responsibilities. Employment in computer science and information technology occupations is likely to grow by thirteen percent from 2020 to 2030, leading in the creation of more than six-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand new jobs. Our CCPS students and graduates are the next generation of computer scientists and innovators. This field is growing globally, and the CCPS is prepared to support our students for the This demand is why the Virginia Department of Education has created a set of computer science standards. This set of standards was released in 2017, interrupted by a pandemic, and then will be reviewed and updated in 2024. These computer technology standards of learning integrate computer literacy, educational technology, digital citizenship, information technology, and computer science. These standards are linked to the core standards and overlap activities and lessons that CCPS students are already engaged in daily in the classroom, as well as provide relative and engaging instruction for all students as described in Achieve 2027. There are two types of computer science activities. There's plugged and unplugged. Plugged is all of those activities and lessons supported by the CCPS Department of Technology and Innovation and used in the classroom. This technology includes our one-to-one computers for grades three through twelve, the use of our iPads and our new Promethean boards and pre-K through second grade. This also includes robotics programming and computer science classes. Unplugged activities are those activities that are done through movement, manipulatives, and without a device. These include what is shown here. Ms. Yonkin, an innovation specialist at Lewis &amp; Clark Elementary School, read a story to the class and then asked them to sequence the events of the story. Students started on a large grid taped out on the floor and moving from each point of the story across the grid with simple directions. Then students worked collaboratively to move the characters along the story grid on sheet that they had on the table using simple code language such as arrows and stops. This cross-curricular lesson involves several components of literacy, math, and computer science. It also included a social-emotional component in requiring students to work together and respect one another's ideas. This is just one example of how our innovation specialists are embedding computer science into cross-curricular activities. Let's take a look at our current computer science offerings. Starting with our elementary, CCPS is providing quality computer science lessons and practice through our innovation labs and collaborative teaching practices for all students. Here we see Madison students coding a B-bot robot to move across a map of Virginia identifying each region. Students are highly engaged in learning the Virginia regions and land formations as part of their SOL learning as well as computer science. All elementary schools have a computer science standard built into the curriculum. Innovation specialists at each school collaborate with classroom teachers to create lessons which have the computer science embedded in them. Students are scheduled into the innovation lab at each school to use a variety of resources, including B-bots, Ozobots, Scratch Junior for coding and unplugged lessons. Caroline Middle School offers students in grades six through eight the opportunity to explore computer science through electives. Currently, course offerings include Technology STEM Education for six, seven, Technology Systems STEM for eight, and Computer Science through Virtual Virginia. Currently, the projected number of middle school students taking these elective courses is about four-hundred-and-eight students for the year, which means that only forty-two percent of the student body have a designated computer science course. Though there is room to increase these course offerings, these courses are not the only computer science offerings at our middle school. Additional computer science opportunities at CMS include lessons created collaboratively between content teachers and the innovation specialists. This cross-curricular collaboration allows students to gain exposure to computer science opportunities. Mr. Young, the innovation specialist, has partnered with an instructional specialist, Courtney Landers, as part of a professional development opportunity from Code VA called Reach Across the Hall, which combines social studies and computer science lessons for all teachers. Additionally, CMS meets the computer science standard requirements and provides cross-curricular learning through the innovation lab. Mr. Young collaborates with teachers to create out-of-the-box computer science opportunities such as coding an Ozobot to trace and identify the parts of a cell, as seen in this example. Mr. Young demonstrated to a science class how to code the bot with basic directions, then students practiced their coding skills, and finally, the students were able to code the simple directions for Ozobots to take a tour through a plant and animal cells to identify the parts of the cell. This cross-curricular collaboration empowers the students to problem-solve and learn basic coding skills along with their science material. This is one of the many cross-curricular activities that Mr. Young and the teachers of CMS are working on weekly. Currently, Caroline High School offers cybersecurity pathway of computer arts, graphics design, technical drawing, and design and engineering, and drawing and design. There's a lot of drawing and designs in there. These pathways channel our students towards computer science and STEM-reflected fields. Teachers at CMS are also afforded the opportunity to collaborate and plan with innovative computer science embedded activities in their classroom. Innovation specialist Mr. Driscoll works with teachers and community partners to provide support for embedding computer science into the daily fabric of CHS in a partnership with Daugham Naval Base. Due to the generous donation from Daugham Naval, CHS has a new coding club that will compete this spring in a regional robotic competition. The coding club meets during Cav Block and is shown here above. The students collaborate together, as you can see them writing on the window, in the innovation space to construct the robot, which they have to literally put together, and then they have to code its path, meeting several challenges along the way, for the students to solve as the robot moves along the board. In addition, CHS teachers are embedding computer science vocabulary and skills through their lessons. Mr. Driscoll is collaborating with teachers to support them in finding the overlaps of their content and the computer science standards. These standards can be linked and assessed through assessments in Schoology. As you can tell from the information presented tonight, CCPS is implementing the state computer science standards through collaboration and creative lesson planning and support. But how can we grow forward? There is still work to be done. CCPS must continue the current practices of collaboration between teachers and innovation specialists and instructional specialists. Teachers need to participate in the professional development that's available to them. Code VA is offering free, several free PD opportunities for all teachers to help them develop the basic idea and understanding of computer science and to plan lessons that marry their computer science standards and their core content standards. Teachers and innovation specialists can collaborate on embedding computer science and vocabulary into their daily lessons. By aligning the core standards in the classroom practices, students can learn many of the practices and values of computer science through modeling. Additionally, teachers should attend conferences that are technology-based to gain insight and meet with other professionals that are also trying to embed those computer science standards into their classes. What can the division and school leadership do to grow the computer science implementation? Investigate computer science pathways for careers and bolster some offerings. Continue to grow community partnerships that are invested in advancing computer science. Continue to guarantee access for all students for every area of computer science. And expand on computer science extracurricular activities such as robots, coding, Lego Masters, and engineering. These can even happen through advisory or Cav Block. CCPS has access to Major Clarity, a platform where students learn about the career path that best suits their needs and then helps them to build a resume as well as digital citizenship skills that are necessary to pursue a career. Finally, and probably most importantly, again, our teachers need to build their efficacy of computer science through professional development opportunities. Over the next two years, it's important for CCPS to prioritize computer science in the classroom and work towards full integration for all students. And this very busy information slide shows a timeline of the next steps towards full integration for computer science standards for CCPS. It is important that teachers and leaders take advantage of those PD opportunities and those computer science offerings. Increase computer science awareness with the community and the students. Investigate digital citizenship opportunities throughout the community and business partnerships. Investigate CTE pathways for coding and game design. By the summer of 2023, the goal is to increase the number of teachers that are taking advantage of Code VA PD, which is free. It's fun. I even did it this summer, and I learned just enough to be dangerous, but it was really good. Innovation specialists continue to pursue PD opportunities for teachers, leaders, and themselves. Build in computer science standards into the new pre-K federal program to ensure that we equip their newest, youngest students with computer science skills from the beginning. Increase our computer science awareness for building leaders to include look-for's when they're completing observations. And develop a pathway for coding and game design. This is extremely important as this is the new wave of computer science as we're looking at our students that are getting ready to graduate in the next few years. By the fall of 2023, CCPS should have every teacher with access to computer science content and alignment to lesson builders, allowing teachers to use that computer science and embed the lessons, as well as begin a repository of computer science lessons for all teachers to choose those lessons as they need to align with their content. The innovation specialists will continue to support and build teacher practices and collaboration, and all teachers should be demonstrating some form of computer science in the classroom and the look-for's. And assess the digital citizenship program, collect data on teacher implementation, and progress and implement the coding and game design pathway in CTE. By the winter of 2023, 24, CCPS should be assessing teacher implementation, assessing our integration for all K-through or pre-K through twelve, and continue to add computer science lessons to the repository. Have access to coding and game design pathway and evaluate all those programs related to computer science. Thank you for your time this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions from the board at this time? Dr. Calverick?
I am taking the opportunity to make shameless plugs on behalf of the FY24 budget, and not unlike or similar to my comment when Ms. Haislip was at the podium. Dr. Bryant, who is a newly-minted doctor, has been brought on board through ESER funding. Her position was created to support virtual learning during the pandemic, but it is a crucial hole that will remain unfilled or not satisfactorily filled if we do not find local dollars. Her position is shifting from the virtual instruction lens into innovation and computer science, overseeing our innovation specialists, our STEM labs, overseeing library media specialists. So there is, again, a tremendous amount of future endeavors that we will achieve with her continued position, but we do need to see that budget request remain a priority.
Thank you, Dr. Calverick, and thank you, Dr. Bryant, and congratulations again. At this time, I'd ask Dr. Reed to please come forward with an update on our freshman seminar.
Good evening. Madam Chair, Dr. Rollins Felds, Vice Chair Kelly, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. Caroline County Public Schools is committed to the goal of ensuring that all of our students are enrolled, enlisted, or employed. We are also committed to the goal of ensuring that all students graduate from high school on time. Tonight, Caroline High School would like to present an overview of a freshman seminar course that will support all students becoming enrolled, enlisted, and employed, while also ensuring on-time graduation. There's a considerable amount of research and literature regarding how critical the ninth grade year is for students. Without question, the ninth grade year is challenging for many students, not just because it's a it's a year of a transition, but because also a year of added responsibility. At the same time, the ninth grade year is also a critical factor in regarding the overall success of students. If students can be successful in ninth grade, most research indicates that students can be successful following sophomore, junior, and senior years. However, if students are not able to be successful, it is unlikely that students will be as successful as they can be as high school students. The other consideration for this course is college, is the college and career readiness indicator. In the coming years, high school accreditation will be attached to a high school's ability to ensure an acceptable amount of CTE completers or students in advanced coursework. While the specifics of this indicator have not been fully outlined by the Virginia Department of Education, we know that this will be an additional factor for high school accreditation in the near future. As such, as a school division, we want to ensure that we work to increase the number of students that become CTE completers. The Cavalier Academy will work to address these factors by, by providing a wraparound approach to our freshman students. Our proposed freshman seminar course will provide a foundation for decision-making, goal-setting, and the overall success of freshman students. At this time, Mr. Just will provide an overview of this course.
Mr. Just.
Good evening. I'll kind of get, again, pardon my voice. I'll continue where Craig left off. The objective of this, the Cavalier Academy is designed to implement to maximize student potential. We want to do that by providing instruction on the following, and a lot of this is through the freshman seminar component. It is study skills, social skills, the soft skills, career exploration, workplace experience, college readiness, and the exposure to career pathways offered at Caroline High School through CCPS. That's the objective of that seminar for the Cavalier Academy. And what we expect the following outcomes from the addition of this Cavalier Academy for our freshmen. Increased on-time graduation rate. Increase students reaching program completer status, that three years of completing a program for a CTE program like carpentry, like technical drawing. Increase in college and career readiness index. Increase students, uh, learning and industry, I'm sorry, earning an industry credential. Making sure we decrease that chronic absenteeism. Find another way for them to want to be in school, to be successful in school, and to come every day. Increase in elective availability for 10th through 12th graders. Having this one kind of step as a freshman allows them to pick classes they truly want to be in. It may give them that year to wait, but instead of taking 20 classes they may not want, getting a pathway that they really want, and really makes and motivates them to come to school. Completion of the academic and career plan that they actually start with major clarity at the middle school. Taking that and using that as a tool that allow them to be successful when they walk across that stage. So I want to overview the program components. The following is a list of those components required to make program success for all freshmen who come through the Cavalier Academy at CHS. The freshman seminar is the major component of this. All students in the freshman class will have to take the freshman seminar, which is career strategies when you look at VDOE. A teaming approach, similar in middle school. All freshman teacher students will be divided into two teams. A teacher will be selected as a lead of, of each team. We'll have one administrator for freshmen. Right now, we have that tagged with Mr. Dudley, and one counselor, so they can truly work as almost a school within a school to fully support these students every day they're in Caroline High School as a freshman, so that everyone knows students that may need additional support, whether it's their learning style or whether it's attendance. This gives us that wraparound support that Dr. Reed was talking about. And when you look at that freshman seminar component, the career strategies class, this class will serve as the structure and really the foundation for the entire program. We're using the model that has been implemented in Hampton City Public Schools. They call it Success 101. We would call it freshman seminar, but again, it is a career strategies course. We think this is a way to allow students to pick pathways, to really get on with their future and be excited to come to school every day, to earn that opportunity in the future. When you look at this freshman seminar class, I'll, I'll go over some of the highlights. It's an in-depth study of career clusters and pathways. Students will be able to analyze career assessment results that they complete through major clarity, compare various educational options, and develop or revise that plan we talked about related to their academic and career-related goals. Students will develop leadership, interpersonal, and career skills. There will be high-quality work-based learning experiences that Beth Markman in CTE has already put in with the cohort. Again, we will have students who have an opportunity to take the workplace readiness skills as part of this course, you know, so they don't have to take that in another CTE course. We will use this opportunity, their freshman year, to check that graduation requirement off. And again, the resources needed to really make the freshman seminar work are some things, a lot of things that we're already doing. You know, we have a CCPS mentoring program that we're developing already. Use that to enhance this program. We want to develop a more of a peer mentoring program with our seniors and juniors to support our freshmen at Caroline High School. We're already doing the workplace readiness soft skills training. This allows us to enhance it. The CTE cohort program that we see all the time, they visited Atlantic Builders just the other week. This is part of that program as well to a larger scale, to get these kids as freshmen to visit different work-based sites so they can really see what those careers are like to develop that interest. The major clarity platform, we've used this a little bit more this year, but this allows us to make that very powerful for every student that comes through our doors. Then you start thinking about a pathway selection day. This has been very successful with Hampton, but when students pick that pathway they want to go, whether it's the college route, or maybe it is building and trades, but this really kind of gets some excitement behind it, which again, we hope will help attendance. I put together a sample student schedule for you just to get an idea what one would be like, so you'd either be on the red team or the blue team and have a certain set of teachers. Now, these aren't locked in stones, so some of my teachers that are watching this and see that, I don't want anyone to stress out yet, but this gives you an example of what that would look like for students. And there's other chances for electives like band in your world language ROTC is part of that as well. Is there any questions for Alice? Send her back over to you, we'll take over.
Thank you, Mr. Just. A course application has been submitted as well as supporting documents. In order for Caroline High School to move forward with scheduling, we are asking the board to waive the first reading and approve the adoption of the freshman seminar course for the 2023-24 school year. Also, at this time, we'd like to answer any questions that you may have.
Board members, do you have any questions or comments at this time? To my right? Mr. Kelly?
So if you could go back to the sample schedule that was up there, I think it was slide nine. So what about students who are not in Algebra I, but they're in geometry, if they're not in environmental sciences, they've taken biology?
So we'll have some, like, kind of cohorts within those classes, so there will be some outliers that won't have the exact team members. We'll have to make some adjustments, especially as we get into the first couple of years. So there will be some, you know, varying of schedules. So that is going to happen on a case-by-case basis, there's no doubt about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Same with our collaborative model and collaborative classes as well.
Dr. Calverick?
I would like to indicate that we have identified a full-time equivalent, an FTE, for this course through an ESER position, a class size reduction position, and so they are able to move forward. They've done a staff analysis and pulled staffing internally to, I believe, handle six blocks, and they need that additional teacher FTE to operationalize an additional six or seven blocks. And so that ESER position is a placeholder. This too is a budget request. However, we have a backup plan for the 23-24 school year, should that position not be approved in the FY24 budget. That would in turn give us a year of implementation, a collection of data, and a variety of reflection activities to determine the benefit and impact of the program. So that is an important piece as a board to be aware of. Dr. Monroe, my question after that long-winded statement is, are we waiving first reading, or is this supposed to be a new business as a first read and then revisit it in January?
Well, what we wanted to do is, this should have been a new business, being that the course request form is part of this process. However, I know that through scheduling, and in order to ensure that we can move forward with scheduling in January and in early February, if it were a new business, which it should have been, we would want to waive the first reading this evening and ask for adoption of the program.
So my understanding that students will be scheduled, you said, in January and February?
Yes.
So after this winter break?
Yes.
That, Dr. Monroe, that's my question is, what's the urgency? What, what's the urgency for having us skip the first read?
Well, again, in order for the school counselors to promote, in order for Mr. Just, you know, to start to align his, his staff, it would be based on the number of students that would be a part of the program. And we want the students to know exactly what path and what program is in place so that they're prepared for their freshman year.
Mr. Just, what is the exact scheduling window, please?
Uh, it starts in, you know, January, where we start meeting with everyone across the board, then we go, like, it'll literally go January, February, and March to try to get every kid scheduled, from eighth graders through seniors.
So potentially, this evening, there is a recommendation that has yet to be discussed to transition the January board meeting from January 9th to January 23rd. If the board was to not waive first read, would you be able to schedule freshmen beyond January 23rd when a decision could be made about the course, so they have two opportunities to review the course submission?
I mean, I think we could, we could adjust our timeline if needed, without a doubt. I mean, we could make that happen.
Thank you.
I have a question for clarity. On the course description, this is marked as an elective and not required. Is that accurate?
I mean, it is, it, like I said, technically, I would say it is accurate, and if you look at it, it's an elective course as provided by the state of Virginia. We would make this required for our freshmen, just because we think it's that, that really, that essential step to connect them on the right pathway. You know, just because when we looked at that model at Hampton, you know, it ended up being tremendously powerful for that whole community. Now, why it's not 100% required, to some kids, it will not fit in their schedules because they may be governor's school, you know, right away, so there are going to be some adjustments. But that's why it wouldn't be, I don't think, mandatory for, you know, because of those little adjustments, because of governor's school.
What is the pleasure of the board this evening? The request before us is a presentation of the materials and the application with the request to waive the first read, so we will be making a decision to approve tonight.
Madam Chair, I have no problem moving forward, because I know, I mean, we're, if we probably are going to want to move in our January meeting until, what was the date? The 23rd?
Right.
Right, and that puts them, I mean, as I work in a high school, and I know that all that stuff starts in, soon as you get back, it's like a week of normal, and then it's a week of schedule, and it gets busy. So I have no problem with us doing it, and if, I'm just throwing out that I personally don't, I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
I'm of the same mind. I understand necessities here, and I'm kind of have a split heart about this thing. So I want, I want to understand it better, so I'm inclined to want to wait till January, but I understand their urgency. Where can we find some medium position?
Okay, so, um, in order to discuss this, we really, at this point, need to have a motion on the floor?
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the freshman seminar as presented.
Okay, there is a motion. We need a second to be able to discuss.
Second.
Mr. Kelly with the motion, Ms. Carson with the second. Mr. Spalding, your question?
Yeah, Mr. Just, you say, this is going to be mandatory to all freshmen, correct?
Correct. There are some exceptions, like governor's school. There are, like, few exceptions, but for most kids, it'd be mandatory.
Such as?
Such as governor's school would be the, like I said, there are certain kids that go to the governor's school for four, you know, for four years. That would be one of those exceptions.
No, I'm all for it. Don't get me wrong. I just, you know, you know what I'm saying here.
I understand.
I personally don't have a problem with it. I see it as being something that's going to be beneficial, if you don't want to give the students an opportunity to look a little further into that educational career and help them to make decisions based on information that they have from these courses. So I don't want to follow it personally.
Okay. And so are there any other questions? Outstanding, I'd ask Ms. Lisa Stevens to please call for the vote.
Mr. Spalding?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor? Mr. Copeland?
No.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Carson?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye. The motion carries. The course is approved, and I trust, as you guys always do, you'll take into consideration the concerns of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd now ask Marsha Stevens to please come forward as we discuss for informational purposes the Sandsbury Harvey Track and Field Facility at the Caroline Stadium, the naming project.
Good evening, Dr. Chair, Dr. Rollins Fells, Vice Chair Kelly, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. I wanted to give a brief presentation tonight on the signage for the facility of Sandsbury Harvey Track and Field at Caroline Stadium. Caroline County School Board took action on November 3rd on the naming of, naming requests from the community for the track and field at the stadium. Tonight, I'll present a quick timeline of the signage project for the facility. As a quick overview, there's a brief summary of the September 30th nomination. Coach Sandsbury Harvey has been a Caroline High School Track and Field coach for over four decades. Coach Harvey joined the CC, CCPS team in 1977 as a teacher. He taught physical education at CMS, taught behind the wheel at CHS, and was a guidance counselor at CHS. Mr. Harvey retired from CCPS in 2000, dedicating 39 years of his life to educational betterment and well-being of the students of Caroline County Public Schools. I'm delighted to work with the committee for the signage to honor Coach Harvey. This evening, I will highlight the associated timeline, share the committee makeup, and the actions of the committee will be taken as we move forward in the process for the installation and the ceremony. The timeline of the signage will run from December to spring of 2023 as follows. In December, we're forming, forming the committee. January will hold a committee meeting. February, work with vendors to obtain quotes and present ideas to the school board members, and in spring, have an installation ceremony of the signage. I attended the athletic advisory meeting this month and was there seeking members that may be interested in serving on the signage committee. I am still awaiting confirmation on a few members, however, the committee will consist of the following members. Members who were on the naming committee, previous athletes of Coach Harvey, parents of the athletes, and chief operations officer and the supervisor of maintenance and facilities. I hope to finalize the committee members this week, and we will be upon the return of winter break to begin the developing of ideas for signage and obtain quotes for the vendors. I've already been told a few ideas from the committee and excited to meet in January for the additional idea generation. Once the committee has finalized the recommendations, I will present to the board for our final approval, and we look forward to the installation and ceremony of the signage of the Sandsbury Harvey Track and Field at Caroline Stadium. I anticipate this to take place finally in spring, and at this time, I'll be happy to take any questions from the board.
Any questions from the board? All right. No questions. Looking forward to the update.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd ask Ms. Karen Foster to please come forward for our PayPoint HR Compensation and Classification Study.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Rollins Fells, Vice Chair Kelly, members of the board, Dr. Calverick, and community members. It is my pleasure to come before you this evening with Rick Campbell from PayPoint HR, who will be presenting his findings from a comprehensive, comprehensive compensation and classification study this evening. Afterwards, we'll have the opportunity to answer any questions that you have at this time. As Dr. Calverick has mentioned, there is a lot that is important to our division in terms of budget, and having a third-party vendor come in and do such a comprehensive study should guide us in the upcoming months.
Thank you. To start off with, it's important to note that in doing a study like this, it really speaks well to the board and the leadership of Caroline County Public Schools to make sure that all of their employees, teachers, support staff are being compensated fairly. Not all municipalities, not all school districts do so, so it speaks well of you, and hopefully, you know, the staff here understands that and can appreciate that. The approach that we took principally uses three yardsticks to make sure that we capture all the different aspects of what fair compensation looks like. One of those yardsticks we look at is simply an org structure, to make sure that the priorities of the district are taken in consideration when when determining, uh, what fair pay looks like. A second yardstick we look at is to see what surrounding communities, um, compensate for similar work. And then the third yardstick, uh, we elicit this input from, uh, teachers, uh, principals and various educational staff to make sure that we understand the knowledge, skills and abilities that are required for each position. Part of what PayPoint, uh, does kind of behind the scenes is to statistically analyze all three different components to make sure that, uh, A, that they're valid, uh, true, um, and can be, you know, supported. Because at the end of the day that, you know, taxpayer dollars are involved, um, as well as the livelihoods of individuals. Uh, so to make sure that, uh, it is fair to all parties, you know, those kinds of things are taken consideration. If you can go to the next slide, please, and one more. So our approach, as I, as I mentioned, um, involves multiple facets. Uh, one being, uh, there on the left in blue, uh, the classification portion. And that is that second yardstick I was, or third yardstick I was mentioning, uh, asking, uh, employees, both teachers and support staff, the details of their job to get a better understanding of the knowledge, skills and abilities that are required. Those elements were in fact used as part of figuring out fair pay. So it was worthwhile for, um, all those who participated to be part of the process. On the right-hand side there in orange is the compensation or the number side of things. Those aspects, I mean, those are dollars and cents and understanding what, um, other organizations, uh, pay for compensation. And there section in green are where the two parts, uh, come together, uh, where a lot of math is, is a part of the process, but also, uh, discussions with the project team to make sure things are in alignment with the priorities, um, of Caroline County Public Schools and that it's, you know, reflected i- in our analysis. Next slide, please, and one more. So for comparators, um, ideally, you know, you are looking at other organizations that are similar. Some of the metrics that we use, not only the number of students, um, that the different, uh, districts, uh, are currently educating, but also the demographics of their surrounding population to understand, you know, the economic situation. So we look at things like cost of living, median household income, housing price to make sure to the very best of our ability, we have an apples-to-apples comparison, uh, for understanding again what fair pay looks like. Um, as you can see, those are the sixteen, uh, districts that were polled as, as part of the process. Next slide, please. From that, um, we produced, at the end of the day, you know, the results. Strategically, the goal was to position, uh, the district basically in the, in the middle of all those organizations. Not at the top, not at the bottom, um, to be, you know, fair. That is the goal. As part of the background, uh, you know, analysis that we looked at is to see where compensation, particularly with the most senior or most executive, uh, employees of the district, whether it's the superintendent, the different, um, directors. What PayPoint found is that the organization is not top-heavy relative to compensation. That's, that's a very good thing to, to notice, um, just because of clearing any kind of perceptions that all the money is going to the top um, and at the expense of, you know, other employees. And that is simply just not a true statement. It is actually fairly lean. But having said that, there were a number of job titles that we did find, um, here on this first slide that are, again, relative to comparators are substantially below market. And by that definition, it means more than ten percent away. It encompasses job titles across the spectrum from plumber and HVAC, clerical electrician, all the way up to assistant superintendent. There is no bias, you know, we do not know individuals. So these are facts and nothing more than facts. The reason why that is important, again, this is taxpayer dollars and it is important to be, you know, fair and above board throughout the process. Next slide, please. The second group, um, highlights job titles that are just below market, so between five and ten percent below. Uh, the items that are stricken out there is because as part of this process, uh, extensive work was done with the project team to, you know, better align the classification structure, uh, to better fit, uh, the needs of Caroline County Public Schools. Again, if you look at the, some of the job titles on this list, it covers the gamut from high school principal, directors, the whole nine yards. So again, n- no bias is part of this process. Titles that are not covered in these two categories would be teachers that, or personnel, um, that are compensated at present, you know, fairly relative to the market. Does that mean titles are overcompensated? No, um, it just means the priorities are different and that, you know, where things are, are, um, are relatively well-aligned. Next slide, please. This leads us to the teachers', uh, side of things. Couple items that want to highlight on this in particular. The orange line there represents the fiftieth percentile. So that's again, the middle of the market. Half the organizations pay more, half pay less. The solid blue line is where Caroline County is currently compensating teachers. So one of the things that you will see later is part of the recommendation for, to address is teacher compensation in principle in those first sixteen steps, um, to bring them closer or at the market. Next slide, please, and one more. So as the culmination of this process, um, one of the things that we propose is that first off, that the, uh, beginning step is, is raised to twelve seventy-five an hour, up from twelve dollars an hour. As part of the plan to, for the general assembly is to progressively move the minimum wage up and this is reflective in updating, uh, the classification and, uh, scale and compensation scale here. The spread between the grades is recommended to be five percent and the min to maximum of the spread has been reduced, um, to fifty percent to better align relative to, uh, budgetary items. Next slide, please. And here you can see goes through all thirty-three of the different grades, um, and the number of steps between the minimum and maximum was set at thirty. Next slide. Now again, as part of the process, we again, not only looked at the current organizational structure, the knowledge, skills and abilities that are required for the positions, but also, you know, the compensation and what surrounding, um, districts are paying for it. Combining all three of those parts, uh, produce, you know, this recommendation for an adjustment to the grade structure. You can see here on the first couple of slides, um, from the assistant superintendent and chief operating officer and at the very end, um, the network administrator, HR generalist, and assigning different grades, um, based on those three different metrics. Next slide, please, um, and one more. For the teachers, as I had highlighted previously, um, part of the goal, if it's at all possible, uh, using existing funding is to make adjustments to, uh, teacher salaries to bring them up to market. You can see in that first column where teachers in that, those first sixteen grades currently are at and where the fiftieth percent of the market currently is. There is some difference there and to make that adjustment, uh, the dollar figures will be in a succeeding slide. There's two additional recommendations, you know, on moving things forward, um, including, um, making adjustments to, uh, future rec, recommendation relative to, uh, the governor's proposed, uh, five percent increase in, uh, compensation for all, all district employees. Next slide, please. So the recommendations, um, are, are broken out to different, uh, bite-sized pieces, if you will. This first slide is covering, uh, the different, uh, changes or recommendations and the total cost for each portion, portion of it, uh, including bringing staff positions up to the minimum of, uh, the new grade structure, uh, cost to bring the, those positions that are substantially below market, um, and in, in the very last bullet, uh, that five percent, uh, governor-reposed adjustment there in physical year twenty-four. To make all those changes, uh, would be at a cost of, uh, one point five seven million dollars. Next slide, please. To make adjustments, uh, for the teachers and this, uh, year in particular, um, this would be, if you were to annualize it over the course of the entire year, would be that first bulleted item. Uh, since we're halfway through or so the, the year, that figure obviously would be, uh, would be less than that. But you can see broken out the different components, uh, the total cost, um, to make all adjustments. That are part of this proposal is just shy of five million dollars. Now, the one last item on that previous slide, sorry, um, that we wanted to address is, uh, because it is, is important, especially considering the, the number of presentations here tonight and the accolades, is the stipends that different, uh, personnel, uh, receive relative to, um, their participation as, as coaches. It is pretty common in the districts that were surveyed that there is a higher degree of uniformity of compensation than what presently exists here at CCPS. Uh, so basically the overall recommendation is to, uh, compensate them basically in the middle of the market where everyone else is and then to be more uniform, whether it is, uh, non, varsity, non-football head coaches and assistant in non-football coaches and, and the like. So it covers this report, uh, a wide breadth of aspects of, um, compensation changes, considering the importance of, you know, the work that not only teachers do, um, and they are obviously why, you know, the schools exist, but you know, the old adage of it takes a village to, you know, uh, to educate. And so this also is part of the recommendations is not to only prioritize, uh, adjusting teachers' pay, but all employees from custodian to superintendent and everyone in between. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for your presentation on this evening. Are there any questions from the board at this time? Outstanding, we look forward to reading the report in depth and committing to the work of addressing the data that's been presented. Thank you so much for your word.
Thank you.
At this time, I have Marsha Stevens to please come forward with our financial information and clues above monthly updates on revenues, expenditures and ADM.
Good evening, Chair, Dr. Rollins Fells, Vice Chair Kelly, member of the board and Dr. Calverick. I am here to present the financials and the ADM report tonight. Unfortunately, Ms. Flint is under the weather. I will start off with the ADM report because my financial report will be a little lengthy tonight. The ADM for November is four thousand one hundred ninety-eight point oh five six with a year-to-date of four thousand one fifty point four, point three forty-three. This is a decline for the middle school in year-to-date from October to November. October was nine hundred and sixty-six point six three four to November of nine thirty-one point eight four three. So we are seeing a larger decline this month, um, in that year-to-date ADM than what we were originally projecting. We'll continue to watch it on a monthly basis. Any questions on the ADM report? Okay, for the, um, financial report, I'll go over November, um, for revenues for regular fund. We have three point two million dollars in receipts for the month or twenty point five five million for the year. We're at thirty-eight point three three percent of the budget. And one point one million in our special revenues for the month and two point oh two million for the year at twelve point four two percent. The total revenues so far this month or for November was four point three million. We're at twenty-two point six million for the year or thirty-two point three percent. For our expenditures, we're at four point eight for the month. For the year, we're at eighteen point three, almost eighteen point four at thirty-four point two three percent in operations. Special funds is seven hundred and thirty-six expenditures for the month of November, three point two million year-to-date or nineteen point thirty-nine. So overall, we're showing expenses of five point six million dollars in operations for the month, twenty-one point five million for the year or thirty point seventy-eight percent. At this time, we have not received any county reports for physical year twenty-three. My hope is now that I will go over the audit report with you, that we will be able to turn the page and get those reports for FY twenty-three. Any questions on the November report before I brief you on the audit report? Okay, the audit report, we have preliminary draft, it was received, um, the re, we received the revised draft exhibits on November thirtieth. We received draft management letter and the annual consolidated financial report on, on December ninth. That was Friday. I've reviewed it over the weekend. Um, we do have some differences still that Mrs. Smith and I were in communication today. She was not able to meet with this morning. She could not meet before three. I was unavailable after three P M. So we have agreed that they are immaterial differences to the financial statements and we will meet in January to ensure the corrections are made in FY twenty-three. The auditor will present the audit to the board of supervisors tomorrow night, according to the agenda. There is a fund balance for the school operational fund of one point seven million. There's four hundred and seventy-eight thousand remaining budget of compensation, eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand remaining budget of benefits. The non-compensation was overspent by five hundred and sixty thousand. That was intentional for the furniture purchases that were made for Madison and the high school. There was also four hundred thousand additional state revenues that were received prior to proj, or over projections. The fund balance is contributing to the, those items in addition to pandemic funding that had been received, vacant positions, teacher coverage and substitutes being able to be funded through pandemic funds versus our operational fund. There is a management letter comment as well as a finding for the schools in the financial report. The finding is procurement policies and procedures, government emergency educational relief funds for elementary and secondary school fund relief. The condition is the school board adheres to and follows the Virginia Public Procurement Act. For procurement, however, under the requirements of the uniform guidance, the school board does not complete written procedures that are in compliance with the additional standards required to the uniform guidance. This was also in the management letter comment for physical year twenty. It was in the comment physical year twenty-one as well as physical year twenty-two, the audit that's in the draft form at this time. It was written on behalf or written for both school policies as well as the county policies. The schools did update their procurement policies in, with July twenty twenty-one, second read approved by the board. When the management letter came out in FY twenty-one, having the audit, um, having the second year, I confirmed with the auditors in January of twenty twenty-two. They looked over our policies and they had reviewed them with, um, the auditor as well as a few other people in their audit firm. It did not appear that we had any other policies that needed to be updated. Keep in mind, we have changed audit firms. So we now have a comment for the, uh, management letter as well as a fun, a finding in the audit. The finding is not attributed to the, to the county in the audit report because the auditor noted that the county did not report in the financial report the finding because they did not audit any of the county's federal funds. However, it is in their management letter. I'm trying to read my notes, sorry. I will be drafting a response tonight as CCPS noted that the policy changes were already completed and we had verified the previous auditors. However, the current auditors do not agree and state the additional policy changes are needed. However, the current auditors do not agree and state the additional policy changes are needed. Of course, we will make these changes. Our finance and procurement officer has already been reviewing the recommendations. We will be bringing additional procedures back to the board in, to have you all approve them in the future. I wanted to be very clear as to the finding that was in the audit, the background history in that, and there are no other management letter comments in the audit report that pertain to the schools. Are there any questions?
Questions from board members at this time? Dr. Calverick?
I would like to give a compliment on your thorough analysis and historical overview of audit findings specific to procurement policies. So thank you for that. I know it's been a very tight timeline. My question actually refers back to ADM, and that was the first presentation. You indicated that the middle school had experienced a drop of ADM. Could you please work with other colleagues to do an analysis of those students? I'd be interested in knowing information regarding the thirty students' departure. So that might help us, you know, better provide services, use our family engagement support, things of that nature, if there are any trends or patterns available.
Certainly. We did have seventeen, just looking at the withdrawal codes for November out of CMS. This is more, of course, we know enrollment goes along with the ADM, but it's showing a transition. It appears that we have students leaving and students coming in, therefore not getting that whole piece of an ADM. But I will certainly continue to monitor that with the administration and work with them.
Excellent. Thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
The Caroline County School Board welcomes public comments during our regular meeting and public hearings. Speakers may address an item on the board meeting agenda or an item not on the agenda during this time. All comments should address a matter related to Caroline County Public Schools and should not address an individual student-related matter or a personnel matter related to staff. Each speaker may speak for up to three minutes. Once you see the red light on the traffic light position in front of the clerk at the end of the table, please make your last statement. Once you come up to the lectern, if you have not signed in with the clerk, please complete an appearance request form, state your name and your district. The school board expects that each speaker will be courteous, modeling for our students how one can respectfully engage in conversation with views that may be different from your own. Speakers will address their comments to the entire board and not to one individual board member, nor should the superintendent, a staff member, or anyone else in the audience be addressed. At this time, the clerk will call those who have signed up prior to the meeting. Mrs. Stevens?
If we could have come forward Anthony Lanning. He's a student. And he will be talking in reference to the adoption of the new wellness policy.
Hello. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment today and to speak on the topic of changing our wellness policy at Caroline County Public Schools. Good eve- good evening. I am Anthony Lanning. I am a junior at Caroline County High School. I have been a member of Y Street since twenty twenty-one. And Y Street is a program of the Virginia Foundation of Healthy Youth that partners with schools across the state to train and engage youth in policy change. As a member of Y Street, I am empowered to make behavior changes that promote nutritional lifestyle and tobacco-free living. Our mission is to tackle large health issues throughout statewide campaigns such as Rev Your Bev. Rev Your Bev's goal is to increase the access, availability, and promotion of water in Virginia schools throughout comprehensive policy adoption. Our objective today is to encourage you to adopt the new policy changes you are considering today because it meets Rev Your Bev's comprehensive standards. There are many benefits to updating our division's policy. The number one reason is that meeting the standard ensures that students, teachers, and staff have access to water while at school. Promoting healthy hydration behavior is essential for students and vital to their success. Students who are thirsty or dehydrated cannot perform at their best. In addition to improving student success, meeting Rev Your Bev's standards can also guarantee high marks on triennial assessments required for use by the Virginia Department of Education. This also includes other statewide well- uh, wellness policy assessments like the governor's score, uh, scorecard. Um, sorry. So I can say personally that I used to drink a lot of soda before I joined Y Street and used to think, oh, the caffeine helps keep me awake. Turns out, really doesn't. Just makes you more tired when you're dehydrated from it, and the water is more helpful with keeping you awake and keeping your mind focused. If our division adopts this new wellness policy, it will become an official partner of Rev Your Bev, and will have access to a variety of resources. One of the resources, one of these resources is the Rev Your Bev Toolkit. The Toolkit provides helpful and useful information on how to improve water access, as well as a guide on implementing the new wellness policy. In addition to the Toolkit, the campaign is prepared to offer additional resources that we might need, such as water promotional posters, water coolers, beverage dispensers, water bottles, and disposable cups. We even brought some water bottles to show you what all the students, what each student in Caroline County Division will receive if the wellness policy is updated today. We will leave some water bottles behind for y'all today. Sorry. I lost my placement. We will leave some water bottles behind for each of y'all today. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to talk about Rev Your Bev's campaign. We are very thankful for your time and hope that you will vote to update our wellness policy today and strengthen water access for students and become Rev Your Bev's newest partner.
Thank you, sir, for your presentation and your board comment, excuse me, your citizens' comment. Mrs. Stevens, are there any other citizens' comments?
Yes, we have Lisa Richardson. With, and will be speaking on the executive foundate, function, skills, and sped.
Good evening. My goal at speaking at these meetings is to highlight some issues that are, sorry, are faced by our special education students. And one of those issues is executive functioning skills. I will be referencing the work of Dr. Peg Dawson, a clinical child psychologist and expert on executive skills, which she defines as the skills that lie beneath what we are asking our kids to do at school. Dr. Dawson refers to executive skills as the hidden curriculum. In her words, if you look at any school curriculum standards to find explicit references to executive skills, you won't find any. And if they're not there, then no one is charged with teaching them. She has come up with the eleven executive skills that she thinks are most needed by kids in school. The first group is foundational skills, and they, um, see, no, no matter, no wonder I'm having trouble here. They develop first. Response inhibition is the ability to think before you act. Working memory is the ability to hold information in memory while performing complex tasks. Emotional control, the ability to manage emotions to achieve goals. Flexibility, the ability to change plans, conditions. Sustained attention, the capacity to maintain attention to a situation or task despite distractibility, fatigue, or boredom. Task initiation, the ability to begin projects without undue procrastination. The advanced skills, which don't normally develop until the beginning of middle school and require the foundational skills to be in place. They build upon each other. Organization, the ability to maintain systems to keep track of information or material. Planning, the ability to create a roadmap to reach a goal or complete a task. Time management, the capacity to estimate how much time one has, how to allocate it, and how to stay within time limits. Goal-directed persistence, the capacity to have a goal and follow through with the completion of the goal. And metacognition, the ability to stand back and take a bird's eye view on oneself in a situation. These skills begin to develop in infancy but are not fully developed until at least age twenty-five. Students with neurodevelopmental disabilities such as dyslexia, ADHD, and autism tend to lag approximately thirty percent behind the general education population. That means that a fifteen-year-old sped student's executive skill development may only be at the level of a ten-year-old. As we all know, the expectation of a tenth grader and a fifth grader are vastly different. In addition, most, while most students learn these skills implicitly, students with neurodevelopmental differences need intensive and explicit instruction to master these skills. The first step in improving executive skills is to determine the student's executive skills weaknesses. Most students have some skills that are better than others. The second step is to modify the child's environment to help support those delayed skills. IEP accommodations, if implemented effectively and with fidelity, serve as scaffolds during this process. The third step is intensive explicit instruction provided in context to what the student is currently studying. Improving a student's executive skills cannot be done in isolation and takes a significant amount of time and repetition.
Mrs. Richardson, if you could make your last statement? That's okay. If you could make your last statement and conclude your remarks.
I'll just finish this paragraph. Improving a student's executive skills cannot be done in isolation, takes a significant amount of time and repetition. Executive skill challenges should also be included as IEP goals to ensure consistent instruction and data-driven progress analysis. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Stevens, are there any others who have signed up for citizens' comments? Okay. Is there anyone who is present in the audience today that would like to make a citizen's comment? Hearing none, the citizens' comment period is closed. We will now move to our action items. We have four items for approval in front of us. I'd ask that Mr. Wick would please come forward with the approval of the wellness policy update.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Rollins Fells, Vice Chair Mr. Kelly, the rest of the school board, and Dr. Calverick. Last month, you read the first reading pertaining to an amendment to our wellness policy, and it regards the promotion of drinking water for students and staff. CCPS has been following the provisions of USDA, the Virginia Code, as well as the Hunger Free Kids Act of 2010. And these amendments would officially put these in the school board policy as opposed to just a wellness policy where they currently are. And as you've heard tonight, we've had Y Street here speaking today, and they've been a partner of ours for several years. They do a lot of good work in the schools, not only with drinking water, but with promoting leadership, as you see with the young man who spoke here tonight.
It's the pleasure of the board. I'll entertain a motion to approve the wellness policy.
So moved.
The motion was made by Mr. Kelly, seconded by Mr. Copeland. Any discussion? Just have one comment, and that is to thank Y Street for making sure that you've been advocating for what our students need. Thank you for the young man who came forward to present your comments, and thank you for your patience as we've been working this through to make it officially a policy revision. So thank you so much. Mrs. Stevens, would you please call for the vote? Mr. Spalding?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor? Mr. Copeland? Mrs. Carson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells? Aye. The motion carries. The wellness policy will be updated.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd ask Mr. Caldwell, Mr. Griffin to come forward with the approval of the FY twenty-four capital improvement plan.
Good evening Chair, Dr. Rollins Fells, Vice Chair Kelly, Members of the Board, and Dr. Calverick. Tonight I come before you seeking approval of the capital improvement plan. At the last school board meeting, we presented a rec- the recommendation capital improvement plan for FY twenty-four through twenty-eight. You will find in board docs the updated CIP requests that is in, the CIP requests that are included in the capital improvement plan. You also have been provided a hard copy this evening of the revised document. With our ability to use alternative funding sources, we were able to fund two of the projects in the capital, in the CIP requests. The Lotus restroom renovations and the Caroline Middle School fire alarm replacement. This brings the new total for the FY twenty-four request to forty-five million, three hundred twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one. I will entertain any questions that the board might have at this time.
Questions from the board?
Yes, I have two.
Mr. Spalding?
Do we have a camera in the parking lot yet?
A camera?
In the student parking lot?
I would have to revert that question over to technology. I see Dr. Calverick shaking her head yes.
Technology is currently operating the electronics for this board meeting, but they are shaking their head. Yes, indeed, we do have a camera focused on the parking lot.
Because did we get some federal money for these particular things, the safety of the building, et cetera?
We do every year submit for a safety grant, and we were very successful in this past year's receipt of over two hundred thousand dollars, of which some of those funds were used for video cameras. And we did not get that significant amount of funding for the upcoming fiscal year, this current fiscal year. So they are going to use the, I think, eleven or twelve thousand dollars that we received, or twenty-four thousand, thank you, Mrs. Stevens, much smaller than this past year, for the selected items that were outlined in the grant.
Another question. Do the cameras, are they on all the time as for us in the main office where they can look out there, I mean, look in the, in the monitor and see what's going on in different areas and so forth?
Good mor- good evening, Mr. Spalding. The cameras are a record basis, so as they see motion, or as they see a light, as they hear a noise, they will come on and off. So they will, will record based on that. If there's nothing to record, no changes at all that's going on in the hallway or in the parking lots, then it is not recording.
Okay. My third question, another one. Did you, did the committee focus any at all on our artificial turf? Not gonna give it a shot?
The artificial turf is in the capital improvement plan for the fourth year. I know we had a meeting earlier this week with the football club. And I didn't know if Dr. Calverick was grabbing her mic, so.
We did meet with Boosters and the Cavalier Football Club and outlined a number of next steps associated with turf. There is great interest amongst some of our athletic families and our athletes and our coaches to continue to pursue this avenue. We have submitted, as Mr. Caldwell indicated, for four consecutive years, with this FY twenty-four submission being the fourth year. The past three years have been declined by the Board of Supervisors. We did present in a previous year to the Planning Commission, and that was actually approved for funding. However, when it arrived to the table for Board of Supervisors, they were not able to fund it that year. This past year, the Planning Commission did not have ample time to review the submission of the county CIP, and so they waived their right to make a decision on what to support or decline and moved it forward for Board of Supervisor review, of which last, this past year, the turf had been declined again. So we are taking a different approach this year. We're working in tandem with our Boosters and our football Cavalier Club, and we also have engaged in a geology study, which has multiple phases that will analyze the soil and drainage and different components that must be understood before you make an investment of one point two, one point five million dollars. A committee will be put together comprised of multiple stakeholders. They will visit other localities. They will secure various bids. And we will be working, hopefully, in partnership with the Board of Supervisors to see this through to fruition. Mr. Caldwell, did I leave anything else out?
No. As far as the schedule goes, I know we did write a purchase order with Crabtree, Rosenball, and Associates back on November first for the geotechnical study. um, for the geotechnical study of the football field and the design of a turf field. With that being said, in the early parts of January, there will be a site survey, along with the soil sampling of that field to get requirements needed, um, for the design and to submit to DEQ for review.
You shouldn't have any trouble with drainage because that's sandy soil.
All right, still needs to be designed and reviewed by the Department of Environmental Equality. They have a three-month turn time on the, their review.
I hate to be real sarcastic about this, but we've explained to those guys every year how much money that you save and the maintenance and so forth and all, to the point where it's a broken record. And I'm tired of it. We are the only school in the whole region that doesn't have artificial turf. Now you say, "Well, you know, that's just athletics." No, it's not just athletics. You've got, I counted up, we've got three to four hundred kids playing on that in a year's time. That's a, a third, uh, almost a third of our whole student body can make use of that field. I don't mean to get on you, but I, I, I get upset because people just don't, don't listen, you know, they don't want to hear it. We'll never get that out there. You say, "Well, you're pessimist." Yeah, I am, because I've been yelling for this for umpteen years. Oh, that's...
If I could make a recommendation, I would love for CCPS to come back in January and do a presentation on the turf timeline as well as the geology study. So the board is fully informed of those steps. That also will parlay itself, hopefully, into a joint workshop with the Board of Supervisors um, as we, um, begin to convey our CIP and our FY twenty-four operational requests.
I will certainly do that.
Outstanding. The Chair will entertain a motion to how the board wants to proceed with the capital improvement plan.
Madam Chair, move for approval of FY twenty-four capital improvement plan as presented?
The motion has been made and properly seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask the clerk to please call for the vote. Mr. Taylor? Mr. Copeland?
Aye.
Mrs. Carson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Spalding?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins-Fells?
Aye. The motion carries, and the CIP plan is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. I'd ask Dr. Reed to come forward at this time with the approval of the AP African-American History Course. Dr. Reed?
Good evening. Madam Chair, Dr. Rollins-Fells, Vice Chair Kelly, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. Last month, an outline of the Advanced Placement African-American Studies Course was presented. A course application has been submitted, as well as supporting documents. Tonight, we would like to ask the board to approve the adoption of the Advanced Placement African-American Studies Course for the two thousand twenty-three school year, as well as answer any additional questions the board may have.
Is there a motion to approve the AP African-American Studies program?
So moved.
The motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Thank you for the thorough, uh, report. I'd ask the clerk to please call for the vote. Mr. Spalding?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Carson?
Aye.
Mr. Copeland?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins-Fells?
Aye. The motion carries. The AP course is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd ask Ms. Stevens to please come forward for the revised adopted FY twenty-four budget development calendar. Mrs. Stevens?
Good evening, Chair, Dr. Rollins-Fells, Vice Chair Kelly, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. Again, I'm here on behalf of, um, or filling in for Mrs. Flynn if she's under the weather. We are requesting a revised, um, a revision to the FY twenty-four budget development calendar. Staff is recommending a change for the development calendar to move the school board public hearing on the budget and update the school board on the governor's proposed budget in our budget workshop from January ninth to January twenty-third. Dr. Calverick and I will be attending the Joint Vas- VASBO Conference, um, January eighth through tenth. Um, to, um, that, that conference is very heavily loaded in budget information from the General Assembly. And I also serve on the VASBO executive team and therefore would not be able to be back in time to hold, or be back to be able to hold a public hearing or give an update on the governor's budget. So we are requesting a change in the budget calendar if approved, which would also change the school board meeting from January eighth through to January twenty-third.
Outstanding. Is there a motion to that effect?
Madam Chair, I have a question first. Do we need to make a motion to change the dates for the January meeting? Or have we not advertised that? I just need to make sure.
That has not been advertised as of yet, and so we would need to make the vote to change it now so that we would have time to communicate.
All right. Madam Chair, I move for approval of the revised adopted FY twenty-four budget development calendar?
The motion has been made and properly seconded. Any further discussion?
Point of clarification, January ninth would be the Monday that we are regularly scheduling our school board meetings. So we would be moving from the ninth to the twenty-third.
Yes. Correct. So we are, does Lisa, for, um, excuse me, Ms. Stevens. Would you prefer that in two separate motions to move the board meeting and then to move this, um, public hearing?
It's not needed since the Jan- January meeting has not been voted on.
Outstanding. So this motion would move both. Um, the motion on the floor for a vote is for January twenty-third. I'd ask the clerk to please take the vote. Mr. Spalding?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Carson?
Aye.
Mr. Copeland?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins-Fells?
Aye. The motion carries. The meeting has been moved, and the calendar has been updated.
Thank you.
I'd ask Dr. Monroe to please come forward with revisions to Policy II-A instructional materials and Policy II-A-B supplemental materials selection and adoption. Dr. Monroe?
Thank you. Great evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Rollins-Fells, Vice Chair Kelly, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. This evening, I will present a first reading of revisions to Policy II-A sexually explicit instructional materials procedures and Policy II-A-B supplementary materials selection and adoption. Rationale for revision based on the Code of Virginia. Guidelines concerning instructional materials with sexually explicit content are enacted by the Code of Virginia, statute twenty-two dot one dash sixteen point eight, the Act. Guidelines that comply with the Act ensure that children are not exposed to any sexually explicit content without prior parental notification. The definition of sexually explicit content is found in Board Policy II-A, which will be shared with you this evening. I would also like the board to know that you all have a copy of the VSBA recommendations, uh, for this revision, as well as the model policy from the Virginia Department of Education. Sexually explicit instructional materials procedures. Policies II-A and II-A-B outline how parents may inspect, on request, any instructional materials used as part of their student's curriculum, specifically in reference to identification of instructional materials with sexually explicit content. Policy II-A-B simply states that teachers must follow the superintendent's procedures required by Policy II-A instructional materials when selecting supplemental materials. This evening, I will cover the following sections of the policy. Recommendations: Notification to Parents; Parental Rights to Review Instructional Materials with Sexually Explicit Content; Parental Rights to Alternative Instructional Materials; Parents' Right to Request School Review of Instructional Materials and Procedures for Implementing the Policy. Annual Identification of Instructional Materials Process. The Code of Virginia requires school divisions' policy to identify a specific instructional materials review process. That one, leadership at each school will be responsible for establishing committees annually to review instructional materials, including supplemental materials with sexually explicit content. Each school committee will consist of a school administrator, school counselor, a librarian, a teacher, and parent. The committee should be in place prior to the end of the first week of school each year, conduct the annual review, and address any parental review request. Two, prior to the start of each academic year, teachers should review their instructional materials that may be used during the upcoming school year. They are required to submit instructional materials, including supplemental materials, with any sexually explicit content to the school committee for review prior to July one. Three, when determining whether instructional materials contain sexually explicit content, the committee should consider student age, student maturity, and whether a parent might reasonably consider the instructional content harmful to their child and/or children. Notification to Parents. The Virginia Code also requires notification to parents. A current list of instructional materials with sexually explicit content by grade and subject matter will be available on the division's website. The division is responsible for maintaining the division website list. Notification of instructional materials containing sexually explicit content will be provided to parents through the class syllabi at the start of the school year, or at least thirty days prior to their use. When materials are identified as containing sexually explicit content after the start of the school year and/or the distribution of the class syllabi, principals or designee will provide written notice to any parent of a CCPS student enrolled in the class at least thirty days prior to the use. The principal or designee will email those parents, and the student's teacher will provide written notification. Parent notification of instructional materials with sexually explicit contact, content will specifically identify the instructional materials with sexually explicit content, inform parents of their right to review such instructional materials, and inform parents of their right to have their child use, upon request, in a non-punitive manner, alternative instructional materials that do not include sexually explicit content. Parental Rights and Alternative Instructional Materials. First, we look at parental access. Schools will also make available all instructional materials, including sexually explicit content, for review by any parent. Two, alternative instruction. Parents may request the use of alternative instructional materials for sexually explicit content at least ten days, at least ten school days prior to use. And three, parent review. Parents may request review of instructional materials that they believe contain sexually explicit content used as part of their student's current class schedule. Next, we have committee review of a parent request. Upon receipt of a parent request, the principal will submit a request for review to the school committee. The committee will have thirty days to review each material. Requests for review, which include more than one material, will have the number of days equal to thirty days per item. During the review of materials, students may be provided alternative instructional materials if available. Proposed Policy II-A and II-A-B next steps. From currently in December to January, we will do the following. Educate the school board on the model policy for adoption. Meet with principals, counselors, instructional and media specialists to review and edit proposed policy. Submit revisions for second reading on January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. And on January, from January twenty-third through February, we will construct the standard operating procedures for Policy II-A and II-A-B. Educate teachers and instructional staff on Policies II-A and II-A-B, followed by specific action items and deadlines. We will also set a timeline to review instructional materials by school to create a list of any sexually explicit instructional materials. We will also educate the CCPS community on parental rights to review instructional materials based on Policies II-A and II-A-B. And we will post policy and lists of explicit instructional materials on our division website. What I would like to do at this time is I would like to ask the board that if you have any feedback, concerns, or edits to the proposed VSBA policy revisions, please submit them to me via email on or before January sixth, two thousand twenty-three. At this time, are there any questions?
There are none at this time. I'm Ms. Taylor, I'm sorry.
Um, when we, when you talk about curriculum, how does the question, like, if, if, talk about curriculum, that kind of deal, what's the problem, what's such a problem? Now, I know that there is some question, but I guess my question is, um, where, does this create an issue? Um, with the same curriculum? If there's something in the same curriculum that requires someone to be taught in terms of objectives, how would you deal with that?
Well, Mr. Taylor, based on this policy, um, I can give you an example. Right now, we actually teach Family Life. We do that on the elementary level. We do that on the secondary level. What we currently do is when we begin teaching Family Life, principals or their designee actually sends out, um, correspondence to the parents. And the parents will review the topics that will be covered. And the parents do have an opportunity to opt out or opt their child out from those lessons. What we do is our physical education teachers, um, actually will currently provide an appropriate, um, alternative assignment during the time when they're teaching that actual lesson. And, um, normally, that process has worked very well. And, um, that, right now, is somewhat what this is stating. I hope that answers your question.
This is a, I'm just, um, I'm just concerned. I don't want it to be perceived as objective, progressive, or activity. I'm, I'm, I believe, um, certainly have a right to review, interpretation, of a board with being a part of that children. I agree with that one hundred percent. I'm just concerned about things like continuity.
Uh-huh.
Um, because sometimes what I think is appropriate may be different with someone else's is appropriate. And, and, and the more and more you become involved, the different ideas, it does come with a community of the curriculum. And that's all I'm saying. But what you said is fine. I mean, I, I hope that works. It worked so far. I hope it will continue.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will, um, send any further comments for consideration by the deadline as requested.
Thank you so much.
At this time, we are finished with our action and new business items, and it is time for board committee reports and/or comments. Mr. Taylor, do you have any comments, um, or reports this evening?
No, I would just, uh, again, like, congratulate all of our students who were recognized for, um, all of the accomplishments that they made. Um, secondly, like, to say that I was a part of the regional food bank, um, the regional, uh, a regional food bank, which provided a giveaway of food and tarts. And, uh, we sold over six hundred and sixty thousand on Saturday and covered a calendar for part of that, um, week. And so as a board member, anytime I do something that's volunteer, I'd also like to include the school board because I represent the school board in that way. So, I feel like we were a part of that, uh, of that program. And so it feels very good. And, and that's basically all I have to say. I would, I would wish all of staff and, um, the board a very good holiday, a very, very special, um, wish for a prosperous new year.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Copeland?
Just a, just a few things, Madam Chairman. I wanted to tell the schools that I'm proud of our athletes. Each and every one of them, they've done an awesome job, and they reflect the immense amount of pride that's in the division. And they reflect it well. And I, I have an immense amount of pride. I want to thank them and want to parrot my cohort here and thank and wish everybody a great holiday. Enjoy it. Be safe.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Mr. Spalding?
No comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly?
Yes, ma'am. I attended the Athletic Advisory Committee. Ms. Stevens was there, and I was able to witness her collect volunteers or some of the individuals, as she said, the voluntolds, to join in, which was interesting. I wasn't voluntold, thank goodness. Congrats to all of the fall athletes. I would hope that we could get an update on the freshman seminar in the near future as we end up the school year before we prep, just to get some fine-tuned details. Also, thanks to PayPoint for the presentation and the information. And I know it's a large number that we're looking at, but I challenge the board to take that into consideration and as always, try to do everything we can to make sure that our employees are fairly compensated for the wonderful work that they do. Lastly, Merry Christmas. Happy holidays to everybody. It's our last week, I think, right? Starts next week? Oh, my goodness, already there. So enjoy your time off.
Thank you. Mrs. Carson?
Yes, I have a couple of comments. Um, our board went to the V S B A conference in Williamsburg, and we were awarded the, one of the Board of Distinctions.
Again.
Again. It's an honor. And we learned a lot and got to be with other boards and talk. And it's, it's always a good time to see everyone. We also had Take Your Legislator to School before Thanksgiving. And we were, had a wonderful breakfast prepared by Chef Jazz and his students. Bobby Orick, our legislator, was there and attended. And we got to see Mr. Black in his class, the different things he did, they did with architecture and three D. And we went to see the nurses program, and we learned how to wash our hands correctly, which I didn't know I was doing it wrong for all these years. We also got to see Mr. Hunter Grabett with his three drones and his students and all the things that they can do with them, and it was just real exciting. But I thoroughly enjoyed at Madison Elementary School seeing the new reading program that's been implemented across the county with kindergartners and first graders. And what I love about that is that now all the schools are doing the same thing. Because previously, we've had the different elementary schools doing different programs because certain ones are Title One and some aren't. And it's just nice, the cohesiveness. And the teachers love the program. I talked with quite a few of them, and it's made a really big difference. And the kids get it. It's clicking, and they're doing really well. So thank you for that, and happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. Carson. Mr. Swanton?
I just wanted to started, start off by highlighting a few things with wrestling. This Wednesday will be our first home match of the year. That's also senior night for us, as it's our only home match currently. And then this Friday and Saturday, we travel to Mechanicsville for a two-day tournament. And I also wanted to extend a thank you to everyone who's been by my side over my term as student school board representative. Everyone has made me feel very welcome and supported in this new role. And it has been an immense pleasure serving Caroline County through this role.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair?
And, yes, sir.
I was remiss in not including Mr. Swanton in my comments. This is his final meeting, and he's been an awesome addition to our board, and I'm proud of it. And you've carried on it. You've started a new tradition. You're carrying it forward, not really. I'm happy that you're with us. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. I have a few updates. I'll start with acknowledging him, Mr. Swanton, as well. As a student rep, you have the responsibility to bring the voice of the students to the board. And when you have major comments, you've made sure that you've been represented. I appreciated hearing in your acknowledgement this evening that you've maintained your grades and that you are also an athlete, and so you've done a wonderful job of balancing it. We are very proud of you. And as you move forward into your future endeavors, know that if you need a letter of recommendation, you've got six to choose from, and we will support you however we can. And I also wanted to say thank you to his parents, because we know that you have a great support system at home as well. And to mom and dad, you've just raised an excellent young man. And so thank you so much for being a trusted member of this board. I also had the opportunity, no one has mentioned this, that we went to our annual meeting, actually, I think you did. I'm sorry. And at that meeting, I want to acknowledge that our own board clerk, Lisa Stevens, had the opportunity to present on parliamentary procedure. I know she's cutting her eye at me, so I'm just not gonna look at her. But she did a wonderful job co-presenting that with me, and so thank you, Lisa. It was great to be able to share your wisdom with the state. So kudos to Lisa. If we could give her a round of applause as well. Congratulations to Mr. Sean Kelly, who was elected in November as the Eastern Region Vice Chair. And so he will be helping to support fifteen other school districts. And so we're looking forward to hearing your reports moving forward as I retire from being Eastern Region Chair and passing the baton on. Also, kudos to all board members, and Merry Christmas to you all. As was stated, we did receive Board of Distinction and a Master Board. And I'm gonna belabor the point, not to brag, but to provide correction to a statement that was made that somehow was an attempt to taint the work that we have done. I know that it is not public knowledge because we don't brag about that. But to receive the acknowledgement and to earn the recognition that we did, we had to commit one hundred percent, the entire board, to be present for all of the trainings. It was not subject to anyone being too busy or someone having something else to do. And not all boards across the state of Virginia can get on the same page, much less sacrifice their own personal calendars for the betterment of what we do. And so I'm gonna say publicly, as the chair of this board, I am exceptionally proud, and I will not tolerate anyone undermining the work that we have done in that regard. So Board of Distinction and Master Board, we earned it, and we will be proud about that. Please let the record reflect that I've provided that correction. As such, we have focused on the policy development and making sure that there is an alignment and the documentation over the past four years. We've been able to navigate the orders of COVID and to make sure that we have respectful conversations, that we turn towards our stakeholders and not on our stakeholders. As such, at the November board meeting, I was also recognized as Board Member of the Year. And I wanted to bring that back to this community to say that it is not because of me, but it is because of every child, every family, every parent, and every staff member that is on this team. In terms of my updates, we did have the opportunity to attend the C T E banquet, where all of our different courses were on display. I will not repeat, Mrs. Carson, in terms of the great things that we saw at Take Our Legislator to School Day, but it was absolutely amazing. And I want to thank those who have championed the expansion of our course selection and the documentation of our C I P needs, Mr. Caldwell and the C I P team. My last comment is in relationship to the salary study and to just say publicly to the stakeholders that we have invested on our staff that this is the second salary study that we have done. We needed to refresh that and put data in front of this group. And you have a commitment from me personally and the rest of this board to use that data to drive our advocacy and our advancements. I want you to know that we take it serious. We honor what you do, and we are doing our due diligence to make the necessary adjustments. With that, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Calverick for her superintendent's comments. Enjoy your break, staff. I dare you to turn your phone off, sleep late, turn your alarm off, and enjoy some much-needed rest and recuperation. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Rollins Fells. As we are four days away from the holiday season, I would like to begin with wishing our students and families a very happy holiday season and our wonderful staff a restful break. As superintendent, I'm always so proud to see the joyful festivities that fill our hallways and our buildings, such as winter concerts and performances, the parade, food drives. And CCPS students and staff, you have been shining your light over these, this season. I was honored this past weekend to be part of two wonderful events. Judge of the Bowling Green Light Contest alongside Major Mosher, Dr. Hudson, and Mr. Jeff Sealy. Homeowners and businesses were welcoming and festive. The community was shining their light. On Saturday, many of our students and staff came out to join the Bowling Green Parade. Congrats to our Cavalier Football Team Club for second place and our Lewis and Clark Grizzly Dance Team and Corus for third place in the parade. We also saw our C H S and C M S F F A floats, Caroline Cruiser, Central Office Staff Artists, J R O T C, Madison Cheerleaders, Bowling Green Huskies float, and the C H S marching band. Students and staff, shining your light. We're grateful to our parents and community members completing the survey that outlines the twenty-three twenty-four proposed calendar, FY24 budget priorities, and remaining S R funds, which is due on December twenty-third. Families and community, shining your light. You may have seen a post from resident Taft Coghill, a CCPS graduate, on Facebook. Come out and support Caroline High School and the Carmel School on Friday night. But don't come empty-handed. Bring a toy and some non-perishable food items for the Caroline Cruiser before you enter the game. Who will take home the first Route Two-O-Seven Holiday Hoops Classic Trophy? Other educational entities in partnership with CCPS shining our light. In closing this holiday season, dream big, sparkle more, and continue to shine your light. Hashtag one Caroline.
Thank you, Dr. Calverick, for your superintendent comments. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to move into closed session. The motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Yes, we do. Mr. Kelly?
Going into closed session for the superintendent's personnel agenda for the discussion of appointments, resignations, corrections, position changes, requests for F M L A stipends, recommendations for dismissal and rescission as authorized by Section two dot two dash three seven one one A, subsection one of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended, and that would be all.
All right. The motion stands. I'd ask the clerk to please call for the vote.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Copeland?
Aye.
Mrs. Carson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Spalding?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye. The motion carries. We will now move into closed session. Thank you for all of you who have assembled here in person and those who are watching online. Have a safe holiday break.